The Board of Library Trustees. This is a virtual meeting. And as I've been doing for the last few months, I'm going to actually read something from Governor Baker about virtual meetings. So pursuant to Governor Baker's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law in imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This, somebody's background really is loud. Does anyone know who it is? I wonder. All right.
Sounds like the news is on. Does somebody have a TV with news on?
He went away.
We should all mute unless we're talking.
That's a good idea.
Good idea.
Yeah, okay. All right. This is could be connected via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and general guidelines for remote participation to attend the meeting can be found on the town's website. And you can also listen or watch the meeting by visiting Shrewsbury Media Connection. No in-person attendance members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time. In the event that we are unable to do so, we will post on the town's website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of the proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. And we use Shrewsbury Media Connection for that. And whoever mutes, the background's clear now. So whatever was happening is no longer interfering. So I'm going to call the meeting to order at 7:06 here. First item of business is to review and act to approve the minutes of the January 12th meeting. And once again, thank you, Lisa, for a set of wonderful minutes.
I think the date on that should be January 12th. Lisa, I'm sorry, you did send it to me for review, but I didn't notice it at that time. Because remember in January, within the fourth Monday, fourth Tuesday of the month, we met on January 12th.
Right, because of the budget, yeah.
Motion to approve as amended.
Have a second. All in favor now, once again, I'm going to have to do a roll call here. So I'm no particular order, I'm looking at your pictures. So Joan?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And April?
Yes.
And I also approve. Okay, so unanimously approved. Next thing is to review and act to approve the report of the director's activity in January 2021. Once again, a very busy month for you, Priya, and certainly lots of virtual encounters with people.
Yes, yeah. Do you want me to talk about any of those?
Yeah, if you'd like to expand on anything, please do.
Okay, for the benefit of our guest, I'll just mention that I usually give a list of all the meetings that I've attended in the past month. And that is part of the packet that I sent to the trustees. So I have internal meetings with staff, weekly staff meetings with all our staff on Zoom, of course, monthly managers' meetings with our mid-level managers, acquisitions meeting once a month with a team of librarians who are responsible for purchasing materials. And what else? I have department heads meeting with other town department heads, usually once a quarter, but it's been more frequent this past year. Have a Friends Board meeting once a month, Foundation Board meeting once a month. I attend CW Mars directors forums, and I'm also on their social justice committee of CW Mars. So that meeting is once a month. I am also a member of the Diversity Equity Inclusion Task Force, started by the Board of Selectmen in our town. And we have meetings twice a month for that. And what else? Of course, this month, in January, I had a meeting with the Personnel Committee of the Trustee Board. And we had a meeting with the town manager to discuss our fiscal year '22 budget proposal. Those were important meetings.
Priya, I have a question on the In the Car Audiobook Club. Did they gather outside in cars?
Not really, Joan. This was a children's program, and it was to encourage kids to listen to audiobooks. So they had to listen to the audiobook either with their families, either in a car or at home, on a computer, or if people have CD players, not sure. So this was just to, you know, book discussion once a month. But we encouraged them to listen to an audiobook rather than just read the book. Of course, even if they read the book, they would have still had the allowed to participate in the book club.
I just, the image of it was fun.
I know.
That's great. I think it's great, though.
Yeah, it was a great idea. And Roxanne led that book club.
Good.
Once a month.
I used to find my own children were little, they were a godsend when you were traveling with the kids in the car.
Oh, yes.
Okay.
I make a motion that we approve the director's report for January.
Okay.
Oh, she, I'm going to, once again, go through the roll call, so Joan?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Jeff? Jeff?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
And I also voted, so it's passed unanimously. So next is the report of programs and services. And with, once again, quite a lot of things going on, lots of virtual activities. I'm wondering if you could kind of contrast this with last year. You know, what attendance has been like, you know, how does that compare to other years? Because I think in some ways, we're actually getting more demand for the library this year, aren't we?
Yes, I don't have the exact numbers now, but the usage stats report that I shared does talk about the number of programs in January. So we hosted 39 adult, teen, and children's virtual programs. And 2,039 people attended these programs. The number of attendees is, of course, spike, there was a spike in that because January, we had Professor Kendy's talk, where 500 people attended that program.
I had a quick question here. I thought when I was listening to it, they said there were 700. And that it actually asked for more people, more people to attend.
700 people had registered. But, you know, on Zoom, you can see how many people logged in, how many participated. It was 500.
Oh, okay.
There was more than 500 people could have watched it. You know, a family of four people could have been watching it, or it could have been projected on TV. And members of the household could have watched. So, but we go by what we see on Zoom, and it was 500. We did allow 700 people to register though.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
It was so timely to have him with all the, you know, if you're watching any of the Black History things on TV, he's very often one of the people they bring in to talk.
Absolutely.
And he has a new book.
Yes.
Edited, 400 stories, I think?
400 souls.
400 souls, yeah, I ordered it. Yeah, so that was a real coup.
Thank you. And we got a wonderful response from our community. You know, as you know, more people wanted to register. It was just that our contract with the publishers, you know, there were stipulations, and we couldn't allow more people to register. Maybe if we had allowed 1,000 people to register, 700 would have attended. I don't know. But we had to follow that and allow 700 registrants. But there was a lot of demand. I was very happy with the response, too. Any other questions about the programs I've mentioned?
I was wondering, for, you know, a lot of these clubs and whatever you're still meeting, how's attendance compared to what it is when we're in person? Because sometimes attendance actually goes up when things are virtual.
The attendance has been kind of similar to what we had when we had in-person programs. The book clubs and the genealogy club has been steady of the number of people. The English Conversation Circle, of course, we have only two sessions a week now. We used to have five before. And some programs, we have to limit the number of people who can attend. So that's a factor sometimes. But otherwise, it's been steady. Most of the programs, it's been almost like in-person programs. But you can't always estimate, you know, the number of people who will attend. Depends on the night we pick to offer the program and what else is going on and how people are maybe fatigued by Zoom and don't want to attend a fifth program the same day. Joan was mentioning that this is her fifth Zoom meeting for the night, for today. So.
About my last.
Yeah. I'd like to send kudos out to Deb Mayo for continuing the outreach program. It's got to be a difficult task during the pandemic.
Absolutely, yeah, I'll convey that to her. She was very eager to start as soon as it was practical and safe to do it. And of course, we had to consult with the town manager. And she's been doing an amazing job. And I think everyone's been, you know, very careful about following safety protocol. So she just goes to the lobby of the place, whether it's South Gate or crossings or whatever. Doesn't do with the residents there. She just hands it over to someone in the lobby and picks up the stuff. And she's been going to the preschools and, you know, learning centers and other places. So, yeah, she has been wonderful.
Great.
I just wanted to comment that almost 19,000 pieces or ebooks were loaned out in the month of January. That's an incredible number, isn't it? I'm wondering how that compares to previous years. To me, I think that that seems significant.
E-usage has definite, yeah, thank your question. E-book usage has definitely gone up. Again, I'd have to get the exact numbers. I will be compiling this, you know, chart before the FinCom meeting to see how the usage has gone up for, definitely for e-resources. E-books, overdrive, we've been spending more money on for e-resources now than print resources. And definitely.
Even over 11,000 print resources were loaned. And
That is, yes. Yeah, so I think, you know, offering, allowing people to come and pick up placeholds and pick up their items every day. You know, seven days of the week, we have this access for people, we are providing access. And we don't realize it until we see the numbers.
Yeah, yeah.
How many people are placeholds and picking up their items.
Well, how many people really depend and appreciate the library during, especially during this time?
Sure, yeah.
It seems like there's a continuous flux of people through there. I've never been by when I was the only person there.
Right, it's a steady flow of people. You never see, you know, 10 people at the same time, something, it's very steady.
Yeah. And I like that they let, do some browsing now, putting out the new books and letting people browse. I think people really appreciate that.
Yes, they do, yes. And we've seen that in the survey responses that we've got. You know, the community survey that's on the, online and that people can respond to. Most people have expressed that appreciation of being able to browse, being able to check out books, all of the services that we offer.
So I suspect that many of us have learned to use e-resources during this pandemic that we didn't previously use. And I'm interested to think about how behavior may change because what the e-resources are very expensive, really, compared to print resources.
They are, they are, yes.
This could have some profound budget ramifications for us.
Right, yeah, because the demand for print materials is also steady, and the demand for e-resources has gone up. And we've seen this trend over the past year, few years. It's just more apparent this year.
Okay. Well, thank you for that, the summary there. Any other questions, or should we move on to financial?
Sure.
Okay, so year-to-date, it looked to me like we were pretty much on track.
Yes. Yes. Yes, material spending, we are 50% that, which is kind of where we should be. Right now, a few databases have to be renewed in the next few months. And spring, many of them come up for renewal. So I think we should be all set for that. What we haven't been able to, what we haven't spent a materials budget on is magazines. You know, we suspended our magazine subscriptions in about May or June because till May, we were getting our newspapers and most of the magazines. And then we realized that we wouldn't be able to, you know, obviously, the newspapers, we couldn't circulate. And the magazines, we, people can place on hold and request, but there doesn't, I mean, usually, they don't go to, you know, pick a specific issue of a magazine to check out. Very rarely do we get hold requests for magazines. So we suspended our magazine subscription. And we're not sure when we're going to renew that again. So that's, that used to be about $10,000 a year. Of course, we had renewed everything end of last year, I think, end of 2019. And they were, I'm not exactly sure how it's going to work out now because the subscription service that we get our subscriptions from, they have to communicate with the publishers of each of these magazines. And each publisher has a different policy. Some of them say they'll give credit for when we do resume a subscription. And some of them say that they wouldn't be able to, you know, after a long gap. So it's kind of a mess. But all libraries are facing this. And don't blame the publishers in this instance. I don't know what's the best recourse. But we just have to wait and see when we can resume our subscriptions.
How do you keep track of how, which magazines are used the most? It says that's something people are taking, they're taking them out, or they're sitting in the library and, you know, just browsing?
That's a very good question. We used to do kind of an informal survey because, you know, our reading room was such a welcoming place. People would come and sit down and read the newspapers and magazines there. So we, at one point, we had kept a basket there and said, if you read, if you're, you know, looking at any magazine and reading it in the library, just put it in this basket, don't put it back on the shelves. And that was kind of an informal way to assess which magazines were popular. And of course, we looked at the circulation stats to see which magazines were checked out. So we had done mix of formal and informal survey of magazine checkouts. Every year, we used to do that, actually, before we made the decision to renew the magazines, depending on their popularity. But of course, this past year, none of the magazines have been checked out. And then we just put all the most recent ones out for, you know, either for checkout or some of the magazines, we said, just take them, kind of left them in that hallway. Cards with Friends books for sale. Because what's the point of just keeping them, you know, in the library?
Are any of these available in digital format? I'm thinking of an academic library, which I'm more used to. And now they get almost all the journals that used to come in real form. They're all PDFs. And then they've essentially given up the actual print collections.
Oh, on overdrive, you can read, read most of the magazines as e-magazines. Overdrive has a whole section for magazines.
It is pretty much reproduces what we already have in the print, so?
Yes, most of the popular magazines are available on overdrive.
Yeah.
Priya, can you explain why e-resources are more expensive? Because I, is it because there's a limit on the number of times you can loan something out? Is that what it is?
So different publishers have different models of leasing out the books to libraries. So we purchase them as a consortium. Individual libraries are not, you know, purchasing the books, right? We are part of the CW Mars Consortium. And overdrive is the vendor that regulates all these ebooks and e-audiobooks and deals with the publishers, individual publishers. And I think for publishers, they have to make a profit. It's not that they are selling to, you know, when they sell to an individual, they get a payment for each item that is being purchased. But for libraries, it's a different model that they follow. And some publishers say number of checkout. So in a year, initially, they had started by saying 26 loans, you know, in a year is allowed, and then you have to purchase it again. So it keeps varying from publisher to publisher. And every year, it's a different kind of lease. I think that's the word they use. I can get more information from CW Mars and overdrive to give you an exact description of.
Hmm, that's interesting. I mean, the average person wouldn't think of that because for me, an ebook is quite a bit less expensive than a real book.
Exactly, you would, but you would download it and pay $9.99 or something on Amazon. But our libraries, the cost is way higher.
Interesting, thank you.
Sure.
Anything else on financial? Oh, one question on financial. Have you heard back from Kevin about the next draft of the budget? Because we had, we remember, we met on January 12th so we could approve the first draft of the budget. But it's certainly not the final draft. And who knows what's happening this year?
Sure, so the town manager shared his fiscal projection one for fiscal '22 budget. And he's proposed a reduction of $5,000 to the materials expenditure. So this was the level service budget that we had requested. He's, he's just proposed a $5,000 reduction to the materials expenditure. We had requested $194,000, and he's proposed $189,000. The rest of it, he's, I mean, he's proposing the same, he's projecting the same budget except for this particular line item.
With that kind of reduction, would it make, keep us in line with the state requirements? With the requirements for state aid? I think it's really important to do that.
It, I think it will. And we can always supplement our materials budget with Friends funding or state aid funding like we did, like we've done in the past. I might have something to roll over from this year to next year. You know, if we, the material jet, we can roll over. So I don't see it being jeopardized.
No, we certainly would have the funds to cover it.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
That could have, that could have been a lot worse.
Yeah.
5,000.
Does the town manager usually specify where? Like, he doesn't just say 5,000 less in funding overall and then leave it to you to figure out where it comes from? Or he specifically says this line item of materials?
I think he does specify which line item. I mean, salaries and wages, he could, you know, propose a change if we, if he thinks that some position is not warranted or something like that. He can make proposed changes in any of the line items, supplies or materials or professional development, professional services, any of them.
Okay. And is there some leeway in the materials with the state requirement because of COVID?
Yes, so in fiscal year '21, they have really relaxed their requirements. They just say that a municipality should not disproportionately cut funding for the library compared to other town departments. So the previous years, you know, that we had to meet the exact requirement, they have waived that for '21. We don't know yet for fiscal year '22 what they're going to propose.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, are we still thinking of increasing the summer page hours? Is that something that was discussed with the town manager?
That was discussed, but he has not approved the extra page hours or the seasonal circade positions. That was in our enhanced request.
Okay.
At a level budget request, an enhanced request, yeah. Yeah, he's just approved the level request with the reduction.
With a reduction, okay.
And our need for this is somewhat dependent on whether we remain virtual or whether the library reopens, right?
Right, absolutely, absolutely, yeah. I suspect we will need to provide, you know, both kinds of services, traditional and virtual. So we will definitely need more staff hours. But let's see, let's see how it goes. It's good news from the state aid, though. The state aid award is going to be 20% more than last year. So last year, we received 54,000. This year, we will be awarded about $65,000.
And some of that's based on population as well, isn't it? Yeah.
It is, yeah.
I know, we are growing, it's a town. Okay, all right. Anything else on financial? And next, facilities, equipments, and grounds?
I'd just like to thank Christie, our custodian, and Public Facilities for taking care of all the snow, allowing the snow during this, you know, this past month. And the ice, clearing the ice and all of that. So Christie has been really busy, appreciate all that she does.
Yes, snow's returned this year. Okay, gifts and grants, anything happening there?
Um, we are applying for a new LSTA grant. LS, LSTA stands for Library Services and Technology, excuse me, Technology Act Grant. And these are dispersed by the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners. They offer a number of opportunities. And one of them is libraries as a civic hub. And we are, Mike is applying for this grant with my guidance. So we are going to be applying for this. If we are awarded the grant, it would be from October 2021 to September 2022. So we have just submitted our first draft of the application. And we will get feedback from the consultant at MBLC. And then the final grant application is due in April. And we will know if we get the grant by July. So it would be for $10,000. That's, that's what we are applying for. And as I said, it's library as a civic hub, engaging the community and, you know, offering programs that will bring the community together. I think we love doing that, so. I think we love doing that, so getting more funding to offer more programs would be wonderful.
You know, certainly it aligns with the goals of the library.
Right, yes.
Okay. Next item is personnel. The big item here is that, believe it or not, it's been almost a year since Priya's been the librarian. Our librarian, her contract expires March 30th, and so we need to move on this. And I've been in contact with Christina Anderson, who's the head of personnel at the town. And she's, well, here's the issue. Here's what's happening at the town. The town is changing the way they do everything. And they have something called the Personnel Bylaw. And it used to be that every year, they, there would be step increases for people at different kinds of levels. And then there's, they have a personnel committee for the town who would review positions and decide when people needed to, you know, get advanced to the next level and all that. Now there's changing to something like a performance-based system, but they're not actually going to use that this year to do raises. This year, they're probably going to just do cost of living raises because of the pandemic. So, but it turns out that we are a step ahead of the town because we have been doing this for years. We've been having, the director's been submitting her goals, and we, as you recall, we each, each year, we, each of us fills out a form, you know, that assesses how well the librarian's done. Now, we decided to put that aside this year because of the pandemic. Remember, we were getting started on that. But the personnel case, but we, we had our, we were looking forward to next year. And so Priya has given us two documents. One is a summary of everything that she has done this year. And if you look at that summary, it very much aligns with the goals that we already had in the form that we use. And I think I still, I have copies of these forms, and after the meeting, I'll send this around to everybody. It very much aligns to it, and I would say that it looks like it's been a very impressive year for you, Priya. I feel fairly confident that we are going to all support renewing your contract. The other thing is the goals, and that would be for next year. Now, the thing about the town and us is the town uses a different calendar. We had always used January to December for this. And the town's new system, because of the fiscal year, they're start their, their goals, it, it, the process in April where you state the goals, and then they assess in March, and then they get ready for the, you know, the finance committee and the budget. And so the raises come following July. Now, here is my thought on this. I'd like to know how you guys think about it. It seems to me like, I looked at what the, and Priya sent this to you. How, how the town uses, has a form that they use to evaluate people. To me, it didn't look relevant to your position at all, Priya. It's a very different kind of position. The library director has a lot more autonomy. It's more for people that were working together day after day, and no one knew all the minutiae that was happening. I think our form is actually much more appropriate to what we want to do. But I'm wondering if we want to change our calendar to be similar to the town's. Well, both because it'll be simpler for the town to administer, and also, oh, because of the elections, because every May, there's a chance we get new members of the board. And this would be more coincidence with, you know, the people on the board. And so I would sort of advocate that we kind of change our calendar, that we could just change the months on our old plan. I could, I would send this to you for next time, and we could actually talk about that. I just wanted to put that forward. So, yes, Nancy?
Well, that makes perfect sense to me. I think it's a great idea.
Okay, and actually Christina is very amenable to doing whatever we want. She said she would be very happy to write a three-month contract followed by a three-year, you know, for the next, next few fiscal years, if we would like to do that. And so feedback is welcome.
I, I think that makes sense. I think we should just go with that. And then, well, we are on the same cycle as the town. I think it'll just prevent future, future concerns or whatever in, you know, years to come.
And the thing, and it's because she's, Priya's position is covered by the Personnel Bylaw. And so it has to go through the Personnel Committee every year anyways, and so if we're on the same calendar, it seemed to me to make sense. Okay, so maybe I will, I'll modify the form as we currently have it, send it around to you guys. Maybe we'll vote on that next time. But can I have a motion to approve a renewal of Priya's contract? I think we've all been really, as you know, from month after month, this, we've been very pleased at what you've been able to do in this difficult time.
So moved.
Okay, oh, I got it. Okay, so now, and somebody's second? Okay, and I, and we do have talking about the two contracts, like this new calendar thing. Right, the three-month and the three-year. Okay, I'm going to do a roll call. So Joan?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
And me, I also agree. So congratulations, Priya, and we're happy to have you for the next three years and three months.
Thank you very much.
Great job you've been doing. We'll just adjust, I think, the dates on, Priya and I conversed about this a little bit already, you know. She, she has to fill out this evaluation form for other people in the library. It just didn't seem applicable when I read it for her position. So we'll, I'll send around the other thing for you. Okay.
Thank you. I really appreciate it. And I did, I mean, it was good to reflect on what, you know, I have been doing this past eight months, 10 months, and do the self-evaluation. And I enjoyed having the discussion with the Personnel Committee and developing the goals. So it was a very good exercise. And even if I have to do it once in six months, I, I.
Well, we won't be doing it again for another year, year. We're going to go on this new schedule. And it actually just reinforced, even though we hadn't done the formal process this year, you did it for us by doing that evaluation. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, and we have started the process for the town. So each of the managers meets with their team members, and they discuss their goals for the coming year. And the timing is April 21 through March 22. So that's also been a good exercise, you know. It, initially, people were a little nervous about it, but I think it's a good way to have, good thing to have a conversation, jointly develop goals, performance measures, and have a date to complete the goals and review this periodically. So I had conversations with the managers, and each of them has had, has had discussions with their team. And now I'm compiling all the goals, and I have to submit them to the town. So that is the process that they are requiring of us.
Okay. There's a little, like I said, ours is custom, but at least we'll be on the same calendar for them. So that'll be good. And it will be, with the turnover in the board, there will be this year, because we're going to miss you, Dean. But we'll have a new member in, in May. And so it's, I think it just makes sense to coordinate that. Okay. All righty, so maybe we, we can hold off maybe talking about your goals till next time? Which, the new ones for next year. Or maybe, well, we'll do it, we'll do it in April, when we're supposed, when we're supposed to do it. Okay. Shrewsbury Public Library Foundation, anything happening there? New members?
Yes, new members, Raghu Ragunathan and Mindy McKenzie attended the meeting on January 4th. And of course, that was, we, that was before our, oh, that was on January 4th. I got the dates wrong. Because we had Kendi's talk.
February 8.
Sorry, yeah, February, yeah, I was thinking, because it was after Professor Kendi's talk and discussed that, the successful event sponsored by the foundation board. And we just received donations from our community members just after the event. So the kickoff event was really successful.
Excellent. I'll just, I'll just add that the foundation is hoping to do another speaker event before the end of the year. So we're, we're hoping to do two a year anyway to get started and hopefully expand it as finances allow. But we were very pleased with the, with our initial lecture. And, and I'll just comment that our two newest board members were very engaged in our, in their very first meeting. You know, some people are reluctant to speak up, but they were both, they both asked a lot of questions and, you know, even made some, some suggestions from their own backgrounds, some ideas that we might consider. So, so we're very pleased to have expanded the foundation board.
Excellent. Okay, next item is Friends of the Library?
Friends of the Library met on January 6th. And at this meeting, they announced the sponsorship of the annual scholarship to a high school senior that they do every year. It's for $1,500. It's been posted on the library website, and it was shared with the high school guidance counselors. The Friends are also keeping their options open for a book sale this year. We don't know how it's going to be in the summer or fall, but they're open to, you know, exploring various options, maybe an outdoor book sale or a virtual book sale or a book sale on a smaller scale. We're not sure yet. But, you know, last year, we had to cancel the book sale, and all those books, about 800 books, we have them in our.
Basement's overflowing.
Yes.
Priya, I do know that Falmouth did a virtual book sale in, I think, maybe November?
Right, yeah.
How was, how was that done, Joan?
Yeah, how did they do it?
The only reason I know they did it is because my niece Siobhan went and picked up the book she had purchased through the book sale. So I'll ask her how it went, you know. I think she just went online and saw books and just bought them, and then just went and picked them up.
Oh.
But like, how do you post?
I know.
We had, we have to do an inventory and.
Oh, yeah, I just think that would be a lot. I'll have to ask her, you know, how they did it.
It's like a lot of work.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Claire Nagel, who's our, you know, book sale person from the, from the Friends Board, she and another volunteer actually came and scanned some of the books that they, that they then sold on Amazon. So we have done it to, you know, a small, on a small scale, but it would be very difficult to do with a virtual sale.
The other thing is, I recall, there were those professional booksellers that we, you, Friends used to let in first to have access, and they've got those scanners and everything that they can use to, you know, inventory the books. Is it possible, because that's only an individual or two, to let them into the library to do that part of it?
No, we wouldn't be able to allow anyone right now. Volunteers, you know, to come in and scan the books. I had to get the permission from the town manager to have these two volunteers come in and and they would come in the evening, five, between five and seven, when there were just three or four staff members, or on Saturday. And, you know, they just came to the basement from children's level, on the lower level, and they did their work and took the boxes out and then, you know, scanned the books and put it on Amazon and stuff. It's a lot of work, as you know. We used to have so many volunteers from the Friends Board, including Dean, who worked throughout the year for, you know, to make the book sale a success once a year, so.
So once, once someone purchased a book, did you then have to mail it?
The volunteer mails it.
That's a good question. I, how did they do it? Probably did.
Yeah.
He's actually an Amazon seller.
Oh, okay.
So he handles that end of it. It's worked out great.
Yeah.
Good. And you're not accepting any books, correct?
No, we are not.
If people have, are, how about, is it outside the senior center, they used to have that library book drop? Is that open during the pandemic? Can, is there anywhere else people can bring books to reuse?
I don't think that's been there for a couple of years, Claire.
Oh, it's, it came back. It went away, then it came back, yeah. And there was some financial problems with the, you did the old one, but it's a different vendor now. Because I've dropped books off, and not recently. That's why I was wondering if it was.
I don't think it's in commission now.
Can anybody go into the senior center?
No, no. It was outside, it was in a parking.
It was outside.
Oh, oh, okay. Yeah, so you just drove up and put your books in there.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I hate the idea of people not being, books not making their way around.
There's an organization called Discover Books. They come and pick up discarded books, you know, the weeded books and books that are not in good condition and all of that. Get any, we don't get any payments for that, but we just, sometimes just have to get rid of the books. So they do come and pick up.
And then they reuse?
They don't, I don't think they reuse or sell them. They.
Recycle.
At one, at one time, they were sending them overseas, April.
Yeah.
Okay.
Whether that's still happening, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I think that's happening, yeah. Not from that organization at least. Because that's more expensive, sending books.
The problem with those book drops is that the books sometimes get ruined, just sitting in the bins and dropping in. So it's, it's not necessarily a good way to treat potential money.
Yeah. I always hold my breath when I drop them in there. Okay. All right, well. Anything else on Friends?
No.
Next, we have policies. Any policies we need to discuss today?
Could I just say one thing about Friends? The Stop and Shop program is for the, buy a bag. And it benefits the Friends, and they're doing that again for the month of March. So if you go to Stop and Shop in Shrewsbury and you purchase a reusable bag, it's, it says give back, and there'll be a little sign that says $1 for every bag purchased goes to the Friends of the Shrewsbury Public Library. So please go to Stop and Shop and buy, buy a bag or 10.
Or you could just give money to the Friends directly.
Actually, the Friends membership is going to start again. So do think about contributing to the Friends. Renewal letters should be mailed out within the next month or so, and we're always looking for new members, too.
Yeah, I drafted a letter for, and shared it with Mark, so he's going to.
Good, great.
Okay. So no policies. Miss Selena, is there anything that we haven't discussed that people would like to?
I, I just want to inform you that Deb Mayo has received both doses of the vaccine as an outbreak variant. So the town had, you know, sent out a list of town employees, and I saw the names of all the senior center staff. And I reached out to Kristen and asked if Deb Mayo could also be included in that, and they did. So she got it, she's gotten her second dose, too. So she, yeah, that's, that's very good. And at our next meeting, we'll invite Mike Zeller to talk about our website, new website that we have been working on. He's leading a team on the website development. The Personnel Committee members had asked that they want to see and talk to Mike. And he's also the president of the New England Library Association. So he's going to talk about the programs that they offer for librarians. So he will join us at the next meeting.
Good. Great to that. Yeah. Good. Forward to that, yeah. Okay, so our next meeting is March 30th, a month from today.
March 23rd, I think.
23rd. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at, sorry about that. I added a week, March 23rd, a week from, a month from today, at 7:00 PM. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? And I'm not going to do a roll call for this because it always passes. Raise your hand, raise your hand. Okay. All right, everybody.